Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Ipswich Central redevelopment Committee number two of 2022, this 10th day of March 2022. I note that all members are in attendance except for councillor Nicole Johnick. I'll move that, a leave of absence for councillor Johnick. A second, I thank you, Mayor. Any discussion? No? Put that to the vote, all those agreeants. Unanimous and carried, thank you. Now move on to the welcome to, sorry, acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Are there any declarations of interests in relation to matters on the agenda today? No? No business outstanding, so I'll move to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee, number one of 2022, on the 10th of Feb 2022. I will move that, could I have a second, please? Thank you. Councillor Kunselman, open that up for discussion. No discussion? No? We'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number two, which is the first of the officers' reports, and that is the procurement contract 16456, Programme Management Services variation. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? Yes, thank you, Mayor. Could I have the relevant council officer come forward, please? Just state your name and title, please.
James Hepburn, I'm chair of the Retail Sub-Project Steering Committee.
Through the chair, Mr Hepburn. Thank you for this, and obviously this is coming to us because it's a sole source, it's a contract extension, as opposed to it didn't go out to market, is that correct?
Correct.
May I ask why it didn't go out to tender?
We have a relationship with Randbury Project Management Services going back many years, with a lot of experience and skill sets related to this scheme. The scheme in particular, and their relationship in many ways, is due to come to an end in June 2021, but due to COVID and numerous scheme delays that's brought out, practical completion date closer to the roundabout, the September of this year. Marry that with some design packages that have had to change, and the general evolution of what is a highly complex revitalisation scheme. It's just led for us having a need to extend our relationship with them and numerous other tenants, but it's just with Randbury that we have to come undertake this process.
I understand that the, that tender consideration plan is a confidential document, so I'm not wanting to go into there, but how do you know that we're getting value for money when we haven't gone back out to the market?
There's two things. One, the fees follow a vein from their original set, and there's been no real inflation height within those over many years. Second point is we're always looking through our quantity surveyor to market test what the fee level should be across the schemes, and generally that's done on a percentage to the construction cost. And thirdly, what we're actually doing at the moment, there's a procurement tender out in the market for a project management services for the venue building. So we are taking that piece to the market to ascertain what is best price, and whether Randbury are the most experienced and capable party to help us with that phase of the Nicholas Street development.
Thank you, Mr Hepburn, thank you, chief.
Just so we're clear, Mr Hepburn, what is the scope left for the Programme Management Services provided by Randbury?
So on page two here, it's broken into six packages, but without going through more in detail, it relates to completion of the works and this building that we're sat within. There are elements like there are blinds required on one side of the building that weren't originally thought of, that will need management through design and installation. Then there's an element of continuation and delay works on the Commonwealth Hotel, and then we have continuation of the fit-out in particular of the Metro B and the Eats buildings. As I said, they were both originally aimed to open last year, and that's obviously going to be pushed to this Easter and throughout this year, where we'll have to keep working with them.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions for Mr Hepburn? No? So we have three recommendations. A, that the contractual arrangement with Randbury Management Group, the supplier for the provision of Programme Management Services for Ipswich Central Revitalisation Project, be varied to amend the purchase price from £1,662,128.50 excluding GST, to approximately $2,103,656.50 with contingency of 20% up to $420,731 excluding GST over the entire term. B, that council enter into a deed of variation with the supplier to appropriately amend the existing contractual arrangement. And C, pursuant to section 2571b of the Local Government Act, council resolve to delegate to the chief executive officer the power to take contractual action pursuant to section 238 of the regulation in order to implement council's decision, including the deed of variation to the revised fee estimate and any future variations up to the contingency amount. Could I have somebody to move that, please? Thank you, Mayor. And a second, though? Thank you, Councillor Milligan. Now open that up for discussion. Any further discussion? No? Okay, we'll put that matter to the vote. Sorry, Councillor Milligan.
Sorry, I didn't mean to distract you, I was just scratching my hand.
We'll put that matter to the vote if your hand's available. Thank you, noting that's unanimous and carried.
Caught in an auction, touching your glasses.
Moving on to item number three, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Retail Subcommittee Steering Committee report on the status of the leasing programme and associated developments with the retail component of the Nicholas Street Precinct redevelopment. Could I call on the relevant council officer, please? Just state your name and title. Oh, sorry, Mr Hepburn. Mr Hepburn, without going into the matters that are on the agenda later with regard to some new leases that we're moving towards finalising, are you able to give us a general update on Metro A, B and Eats' prospective tenants?
Yeah. Generally, as it stands, I think we can all see that the contractors made really good progress over the last month. Obviously, we had the weather event that has had some impact, but delighted to say that the Metro B and Eats have stood up incredibly well, they're above the floodline, and the new roofs have really kept out the water. We've had some leaking in basements, but that's not dissimilar to most other assets. The leasing has really picked up, which has been great, and there's been a lot of work and new leads coming through the leasing team, and it does feel that the market is really starting to get going again after COVID, which is nice. And as you'll see from some of the stats here, we've got three new agreements for leases signed by tenants, which we'll come on to later, and then we've got a number of other deals where heads of terms have been signed and they're making way through the approval channels to be handed over to solicitors. So those are essentially, trying to think which ones are, they are, one is a chicken offer, which in other forums I've best described as a slightly posher Nando's, and the other's more of a grab-and-go sandwich offer. But generally, the mix is coming on really nicely, and we're very pleased with progress now.
So on top of the three today, there might be an additional, there looks to be an additional three within the next month or two that may come back to us?
Yeah, we're aiming for an additional three within the next, yeah, next month.
Excellent. Just, just one thing, obviously, the construction industry post-COVID and now with the floods and supply, we knew getting building materials was, was a huge problem and prices, the costs are through the roof. What does that mean for our tenants who are doing their own fit-outs and potentially, council if we at some point agree to, you know, a contribution to a fit-out?
Yeah. As you state, towards the end of last year, procuring materials, particularly from abroad, got quite difficult, and in some instances expensive. We were very much protected from our original contract with Hutchies as it went back way before, essentially the COVID affecting the industry, but the knock-on effect of flooding recently and some 15,000 to 20,000 homes that are all going to need perhaps new kitchens and woodwork and that will really have a knock-on effect to trade and materials. It's, it's hard to say what that looks like right now. I think it will take a good month or so for insurance monies to start flowing and to see how that affects our shop fit-outs. And so we're pushing quite hard to get on as quickly as possible with some of them, so that we can lock in cost and also lock in delivery and end dates. I'm hoping the market can, can carry it, but it's, it's a bit of an unknown at the moment.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. So the recommendation is that the February 2022 Retail Sub-Project Steering Committee report be received and the contents noted. Could I have a mover for that, please? Thank you, Councillor Milligan. And a second, though? Thank you, Councillor Kunselman. Open it up for discussion? No discussion? Oh, thank you, Mayor.
I'll just point out, it's great to see that the Dumpling Place is now forecast to open later in this month. And it looks like the handover to the Gelatissimo tenancy is happening today and opening early April, so it's pretty exciting.
It is very exciting, and there'll be a lot more in the coming months, so we can actually see the results, it's finally come together nicely. Mother Nature just needs to give us a little bit of a break, I would suggest, though. Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. So we have three late reports, and we will need to move into closed session for the discussion of the three items together. I move that in accordance with section 254j, 3g of the Local Government Regulation 2002, the meeting move into closed session to discuss items four, five and six, titled Nicholas Street Precinct Approval of an Agreement for Lease for Metro B Tenancy 2B01, Metro B Tenancy 2B0809, and Approval of an Agreement for Lease for the Commonwealth Hotel. These negotiations relate to a commercial matter involving the local government. Can I call for a second, please? Thank you, Mayor. We'll put the matter to the vote to go into closed session, all those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried.
and confidence. So I'll now move on to item number four, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct approval of an agreement for lease for Metro B tenancy two B O one.
Chair, are we amending that?
So I'm moving to recommendation A and propose that there'll be an amendment.
As per the screen?
As per the screen. Inclusion of the words an associated document of the agreement for lease.
So the first line of recommendation would be that council enter into an agreement for lease and an associated document of proposed less C.
You got it? Mm hmm. And the, okay, that's all for item number four. So the recommendations are that council enter an agreement for lease and an associated document of the agreement for lease with proposed less C for tenancy two B O one in the Metro B building impacting part of lot one on RP one five seven zero two one within the Nicholas Street precinct under the commercial terms detailed in the confidential report and attachments by the project manager dated twenty two February twenty twenty two. Recommendation B, that conditional upon council satisfactorily executing the agreement to lease with the proposed less C contained in recommendation A of this report, council enter into a lease for tenancy two B O one with the proposed less C as detailed in the confidential report and attachments by project manager dated twenty second of February. Recommendation C, that council note that in relation to council's disposal of the leasehold interest in tenancy two B O one to the proposed less C, that the ministerial exemption under two through section two three six F of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve applies to the disposal of council's interest in tenancy two B O one. Recommendation D, that pursuant to section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, council resolve to delegate to the chief executive officer the power to take contractual action pursuant to section two three eight of the regulation in order to implement council's decision at recommendation B. And recommendation E is that council be kept informed as to the progress and outcome of the execution and publication of details. Could I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Kunzelman. And a seconder, thank you mayor Harding. Open up for discussion. Thank you, mayor.
If I may, chair, just note that during closed session, the discussion was around the viability of the tenant, the rent, the commercial terms, and in particular, advice from Frank Knight to, I guess, soundcheck that we are doing, you know, we are utilizing residents' money here and just making sure that we are following the best advice for the people of Ipswich.
Thank you, ma'am. There's no further discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number five, Nicholas Street precinct approval of an agreement for lease for Metro B tenancy two B O eight O nine. Recommendation A, proposed amendments again. Thank you. So in relation to A, that council enter into an agreement for lease and removal of deletion of the words incentive deed and inclusion of an associated document of the agreement for lease. Yep, perfect. With the proposed less C for tenancy two B O eight O nine in Metro B building impacting part of lot one on our, that should be lot one on.
In recommendation A.
Yeah, yeah. So that's one on RP. Thank you. Within the Nicholas Street precinct and the commercial terms detailed in the confidential report and attachments by the project manager dated twenty eighth February twenty twenty two. Recommendation B, that conditional upon council satisfactorily executing the agreement to lease with the proposed less C contained in recommendation A of this report, council enter into a lease for tenancy of two B O eight O nine with the proposed less C as detailed in the confidential report and attachments by the project manager dated twenty eighth February twenty twenty two. C, that council note that in relation to council's disposal of its leasehold interest in tenancy two B O eight O nine to the proposed less C, that the ministerial exemption under two, section two three six F of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve applies to the disposal of council, council's interest in tenancy two B O eight O nine. Recommendation D, that pursuant to section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, council resolve to delegate, to delegate to the chief executive officer the power to take contractual action pursuant to section two three eight of the regulation in order to implement council's decision at recommendation B. And if we can include a new recommendation F, that the first sentence of the last paragraph on page three of the officer's report be deleted and replaced with the following. This paper seeks approval for council to enter into an agreement for lease for a health wellness tenancy associated with the Nicholas Street precinct redevelopment. Thank you. Could I have a mover please? Thank you mayor Harding. And a seconder, thank you councillor Milligan. Now open up for discussion. No discussion? We'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the final item, number six, which is an approval of an agreement for lease for the Commonwealth Hotel. Recommendation, recommendation A, that council enter into an agreement for lease and amendment there should be, yes, the inclusion of an car parking agreement with the proposed less C for the Commonwealth Hotel impacting lot one on RP two six double seven and part of lot three on RP three zero seven nine seven two within the Nicholas Street precinct under the commercial terms detailed in the confidential report and attachments by the project manager dated two March twenty twenty two. Recommendation B, that conditional upon council staff satisfactorily executing the agreement to lease with the proposed less C contained in recommendation A of this report, council enter into a lease for the Commonwealth Hotel with the proposed less C as detailed in the confidential report and attachments by the project manager dated second of March twenty twenty two. Recommendation C, that council note that in relation to council's disposal of its leasehold interest in the Commonwealth Hotel to the proposed less C, that the ministerial exemption under section two three six F of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve applies to the disposal of council's interest in the Commonwealth Hotel. Ministerial exemption contained in attachment one of this report. Recommendation D, that pursuant to section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act, council resolve to delegate to the chief executive officer the power to take contractual action pursuant to section two three eight of the regulation in order to implement council's decision at recommendation B. Recommendation E, that council be kept informed as to the progress and outcome of the execution and publication of details. Could I have a mover please? Thank you councillor Milligan. And a seconder, thank you councillor Kunzelman. Moving to discussion. No discussion? We'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving along, we have no notices of motion and no matters arising. So that brings this meeting to a close.
Two oh six.
At two oh six PM.
Back at two sixteen?
Back at two sixteen.